Not this one, you.
I was in college in the eighties, and that was Millie Vanilli. Yeah, I had a friend, his last name was McManay. And every time he would mess it up, this one guy would go, blame it on McManay. To Millie Vanilli? That was her. Yeah, he messed up a lot, so we did a lot of blaming on McManay.
You didn't get blamed for anything.
Never did.
You know, I got blamed on studying a little bit too much and charitable deeds.
Singing too loud in church.
Is that what your pictures on the wall are?
You are now live.
We're live?
Yes.
Well, wonderful. Let's stop all this silliness and call this Commissioner's Court's order. Let the record show, it is nine thirty-four AM.
We're waiting on it.
Ann had to get batteries.
Had to get batteries, or batteries are dead, sir.
Let the record show that Ann has decided to arrive this morning at nine thirty-four AM.
The record's not showing yet.
Record's not showing.
Record's going.
Can we run the dollar store real quick, man?
It's all that probate, June, when you're like, right there, my bad.
Every thirty minutes, we had a probate, which was like, we had scheduled right. We can go every twenty minutes.
In a manner, you're around through like cattle market.
All right, so let the record show, it is nine thirty-five AM. Four of the five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on YouTube. And if you're watching and you'd like to call and make a comment, please feel welcome to call nine four zero two two one two one zero seven. If you're able, please sign for implication pledges. Commissioner Cresswell, you have the honor.
Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, we come to you today just to ask you for guidance and wisdom in these proceedings, dear Lord. We ask you to be with these people who've been fighting sickness and disease, dear Lord. Help their bodies to heal, dear Lord, be with families that have lost their loved ones here recently, dear Lord. And dear, we thank you each and every day for this opportunity to come to you and pray. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, where God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, Stacy. We'll move to item number three, public comments. Jim, understand you have a, you'd like to update us?
Yes, um, we had our living history, tenth annual living history event this weekend. We were kind of using this weekend to gauge how we were going to proceed going forward because of all the schools going to four-day school weeks. It's hard to have an education day on Friday. What I did was reached out to schools that were kind of outside of our county that I don't typically reach out to. Isle Park, Henrietta, Archer City, and Graham were our four big, and our trickland was our big school. All in all, with a hard count from those schools, we had four hundred and eighty kids. That doesn't include homeschool kids and all that. Anyway, it was way more successful than I was expecting it to be. On both ends, from students coming in, from the guys that do reenactment, some of the measures, they were, everybody was kind of excited about it. So, I just want to let y'all know, it was a good weekend, good crowd.
Do you have any idea of numbers?
Saturday is hard to gauge. The parking lot was full. This was also our first year to use that across the street as parking, so we kind of had them separated between.
Was across the street full?
Um, not full, not like Prophecy Cannon's full, but the immediate right there.
Yeah.
We had a good crowd. The softball field, the old softball field was full. But we had a good, I mean, it was a good consistent crowd throughout the, chiefly this way until about one o'clock. And then whenever college football games start, you kind of don't have people coming out anymore. We used to get a good window, we're playing about nine and one, we have people out there, and then it dwindles, so. But, I mean, for Friday, we had over five hundred. Saturday, I don't think we had five hundred, but we still had a good, good crowd. The reenactors were pleased with the turnout, so.
Are they local guys, or are they from somewhere else?
All of us, they, we had a, and it's, I kind of get a pulse of how we're doing attendance-wise because, Austin, they have the Buffalo Saltfish program, and they sent them up there. They rely on face-to-face encounters. And if it's not worth the drive for them to come up, then they won't come. Well, they were thrilled with it, so.
Oh, good.
I'm assuming that that was a good thing, but anyway, so we had a great weekend. Everybody kind of packed up and got up yesterday. Just got a few tents left, but those will come in this week.
That's right.
It was a good turnout, but I just want to let y'all know.
Awesome, well, thank you.
I know something on that. When I have these events, he'd give you or me one, we need to get that mowed, and stickers work awful. In the parking area. There was kids balled up over, mom's trying to pick stickers out. I was, well, worked trying to get my kid, and dump, you didn't pick up to get on and let you go.
That's actually good to know and good to think of.
Yeah, if you'll let me know, ahead of time next year, we'll make sure we get that mowed.
It was one of those things that we'd always use the softball field, it was our first year.
And it's also, we're trying to get that where we can, where you can help keep it mowed now. Because we've removed the fence, we've removed the trees and everything, so you can keep the bar ditch mowed, and we can go out there and mow the field and make it work together on that, too, you'll start.
I don't mind helping out with it sometimes. I just know that there's some mean stickers.
Well, I bet. Okay, do we have any more public comments? If not, we'll move to receipt of hotel occupancy tax report. Fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents for September twenty-twenty-four from the cabin at Salt Fork Ranch. We also received a hot tax report for one thousand eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents for September twenty-twenty-four from La Casa Tierra. And finally, we received a hotel occupancy report for five thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents for September twenty-twenty-four, and that was from the Wildcat Ranch Resort. We'll move to item number four. Consider the county clerk meeting minutes from a previous meeting, which was October fifteenth. We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook. Any comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We'll move to consider the treasurer's financial report updates on securities pledged. Treasurer Mylum is not here today, so. Is that Stacy? We do have discuss and consider accepting a donation from the True Cemetery Association to the Young County Sheriff's Office for seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's for mowing and maintenance.
Motion accepted.
We have a motion from Commissioner, we do need a motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We'll move to item number six, everyone's favorite. Consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Roberts?
Well, we're trying to finish up on our twenty fours, but we're still getting a piece of trackers that have to be made. So, the total today is six thousand nine thirty-three seventy. And out of the general fund, this is for FY twenty-four, is six thousand eight sixty-eight fifty. If you're going to do the other, you want to go.
Yeah, we would do the other one, too.
FY twenty-five, the total is one hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Out of the general fund is a hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Okay, let's just take those together. Do we have a motion to accept both of those? All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
I noted that Commissioner Wiley and Commissioner White.
All right, I also need to discuss and consider the North Tax Regional Planning Commission membership due for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. It's one thousand eight dollars and thirty-six cents. I will report, we had a North Tax meeting, I think it was last Thursday, and City of Graham was represented. The City of Alny was represented. And City of Newcastle didn't attend the meeting, but they cast the ballot. So, all four votes out of Young County was represented at North Tax. Do we have a motion to approve our membership due of one thousand eight dollars and thirty-six cents? We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Item number seven, discuss and consider employee bonds. Carla L. Smith, deputy tax collector, five thousand dollars.
Kara.
Kara L. Smith, yes. Yes. I agree. All right, so do we have a motion for Kara Smith? Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, item number eight, discuss and consider the vacancy on the Young County Arena Board. Shannon Plowman has announced her resignation from that board. On a side note, Tony Elliott has, her last name's Elliott, right? Tony Elliott, who's the leader, kind of the head person out of the arena, she has announced that she's going to resign at the end of the year. I don't know exactly what time, but. You had her? Yeah, she announced she's going to leave. She's, I think she's a counselor by trade, and she's going to go back to that career, but she's not going to leave it shorthanded. She's going to give us some time. Eric's going to start a search on that, but we have a vacancy on the board, and it's one of our spots. You might be leaving, too? Well, we might have two vacancies. But we don't have that one yet. We don't have that one yet, but we got to think about Shannon, replacing Shannon. So, if we, we're not going to do anything about it today, but if everybody could be thinking about who might be a good replacement, was she the only woman on the board? Yeah, so. Correct, yeah. So, I don't know, just be thinking about, we, we, the county, the county gets to appoint this spot.
It needs to be a woman, and I'd like Cheryl to work for this spot to lead it.
Was that a motion? Well, be thinking about it. It's, this, we're not, I wasn't planning on solving this problem today, but I just wanted to announce it to everybody that we need to come up with a name, and if we could, we'll put it on the agenda next two weeks. If someone has found someone that might be a good person, we can talk about it.
I heard one.
All right, if there's, if everyone's okay, let's move to item number nine. Discuss and consider three applications permits to install entry culverts in the county road right-of-way ditch line for Ross Ranch Road. Commissioner Cresswell?
Okay, I wasn't real sure how to go about this. They have built a new house out there on Ross Ranch, and they built it a couple of years back. They kind of, new people that bought it came in and redesigned the driveway. Well, they had to get three separate culverts to come into the road to make this circle driveway, so I made them get three different permits and fill them out individually for it. And, but other than that, getting the culverts the right size and all that, they didn't have no problem. They were getting it all seen in the DM, so.
You got to spread that length, it starts fast.
A hundred feet.
Hundred feet.
Well, if they do more than that, they don't have a room on their property that'll break.
Thought that was our policy.
We're going to go to the full text, that's facts? Because we discussed they had to be a hundred foot wide or wider. At this point, we didn't have anything that specified how far apart they had to be.
I thought we discussed that on that subdivision up there.
I discussed it when we headed out here when they're trying to subdevelop, put this out there, and we never did come up with the exact footage that we can regulate.
Wouldn't that went on Alny, though, on a state highway, though?
This is on a county road, and we never did come up with something with Allison Bass even, unless we put it in our regulations. And we haven't readjusted those yet. And those were a hundred feet, we were asking them if we could do that, and they were. But at that point, we couldn't do it without set redoing our.
In your opinion, do you think it, does it create any safety concern with it being so close together?
No, they're at the top of the hill. The water goes one way from one drive and the other way from the other. I mean, it's better than them just putting it where it runs across our road all the time.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept those.
All right, Commissioner Cresswell has made a motion to accept the three application permits for the entry culverts. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Item number ten, discuss and consider the sale of two trucks in the bunker auction presented by Commissioner Cresswell.
We've got the International and the Freight Bunker that I'd like to put into the bunker auction and just get rid of them. And they're, they're not going to bring anything into auction, auction, so it's best to get rid of them. And I'm making a motion that we do put some stuff in there.
Since that, since that's a pretty good job out there.
I just need to know if y'all are going to, and I can, I have to run a advert paper that we're going to sell it for two weeks. So, if you'll kind of let me know if you have some.
What commission does it have?
I think fourteen percent, fifteen. Was it ten? I don't know, I'd have to go add.
I think you're right, I think it, I think it starts high and goes low as you go up. That's what I, can I solve a tractor at once? All right, so motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
If y'all get with me, if you have some stuff that you're thinking about. We'll list it in the paper, and I'll put other.
We're going to continue with the theme of Stacy Cresswell dominating this meeting. Discuss and consider the sale of John Deere Skid Steer through Gov. Deals. Commissioner Cresswell?
Okay, I've got a John Deere Skid Steer that we had when I took office. It's a three twenty-nine D. And I guess I can give you the serial numbers and stuff later.
Yeah.
And the pictures on it. I'd like to put it on Gov. Deals and run it for two weeks, and then open bids on it, that'll work.
We can, we can close the auction right before the Commissioner's Court, we need to call the eleventh, what's the next July? So, we'll close the auction at nine o'clock on November eleventh.
Aren't we going to move that meeting to the twelfth, because the eleventh is better today?
Yeah, there will be the twelfth.
Okay. Even better, okay, cool.
All right, so that's a motion, Commissioner Cresswell?
Yeah, motion.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, we have a ten o'clock open seal bids, we need to wait just a little bit. We have a ten fifteen public hearing, we need to wait just a little bit. So, let's move to item number fourteen. Discuss and consider the sale of a pothole patcher, which I'm dying to know what a pothole patcher is, through Gov. Deals for precinct one, two, and four. Before we start, can someone tell me what a pothole patcher is?
Have you ever been on a cruise ship?
I have.
You know when they get to land and they drop the big old anchor off the front?
Yeah.
That's what a pothole patcher is.
Is it just a big?
No, it's, it's got a heat, a heated tank for oil in it. And then you've got blowers and a vacuum on it that push rock, and you can swing this arm out there, get on the top of the pothole and squirt your oil in it, and then it blows rock in it. You have to have it hooked to a dump truck that's set up to work it all, and you've got to have a guy in the back running it. It's, and it's been used twice since, in the last four years. And my guy has used it two times.
So, you're kind of thinking we're going to need it?
I really don't think we're making good use of this piece of equipment sitting there.
And so, we'd like to sell it? How are you going to, through Gov. Deals?
Yes, sir, we got Mr. Bullock, want me to say something?
Yes.
I know a place where you could use that.
Oh, yeah?
It does not work well, it usually leaves a raised patch instead of a smooth patch, and that's why I just, it piles that rock up and it gets hardened, it does not settle.
Well, I see you end up with like, mobiles?
Was that purchased new?
I'm not sure.
I think it was used.
It's in the lab.
I don't work the, I don't work very well with the pothole patching.
Precinct three didn't think it was a good idea to move it, so that's why I'm going to proceed with the sale.
Well, you might have been pretty right on this.
He probably, he probably was very right on this.
All right, so were you making a motion, Commissioner Cresswell, to sell those?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, or do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor to put the pothole patcher in the Gov. Deals auction? Motion, motion passes four zero.
Was it also at nine AM on the twelfth? And I'll need pictures and descriptions.
Okay, I.
Do you have it at your door?
Yes, my mother.
Your go-to gal.
No, because I don't know that many questions about it.
We'll move to item number fifteen, which is always Cheryl's favorite thing on the agenda, is to discuss and consider the twenty-twenty-five holiday schedule. Before we discuss it, I will have to confess that Timmy put out a preliminary holiday schedule. Forty-five holidays she came up with. So.
Good job, Timmy.
We pared it back, we pared it back to fourteen that we had last year. I sold Timmy Hamburger Day, it was not a holiday that we were going to celebrate. But the proposed holiday schedule, and I'm open for discussion on this, but New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, day after Christmas. That comes up to be fourteen. Thoughts?
What do you think? Will you declare a holiday? I'd like to see you ever offer to respect that holiday out, instead of working, maybe have a date somewhere else.
What are you, what are you talking about?
Some kind of road bridge, works that day and moves it down, but day after Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's Eve, so they take that whole week out.
So, you're saying each individual precinct makes that decision? And you're opposing that?
If it's worthwhile to declare a holiday to respect those people or that they need to be taken off.
Well, I think that probably falls under the, each elected official kind of can make their own rules.
Excluding that as somewhere, because they work holidays.
Yeah. But, um. Thoughts on the proposed holiday schedule? Too many?
Like, that's how many we ended up with last year.
We, this is what we had last year. That this, this was, this is, no original thought was put into this. This is a copy of last year.
Make a motion if that if we are holiday scheduling this.
We have a motion for Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. I do believe it is ten o'clock. Can you be the Vanna White today and?
Well, I wish. So, I received one bid, and it's from Brunnan, B-R-U-N-E-R Motors out of Steenville, Texas. Let's see what he said.
Oh, yes, that should be that. This is the ten AM open seal bids for the twenty-four, twenty-five, one-time pickup, four-wheel-drive crew cab chassis?
Cabin chassis.
Cabin chassis?
With utility bed.
With a utility flatbed for precinct two.
Okay, he did include the bed on that. For the purchase of about seventy-five thousand dollars for the pickup and the bed. And then I guess he had talked to you about a train accident or something. So, the purchase of seventy-five thousand dollars.
That was a good idea, or hope it would be?
Or I hope it would be. What would you do with your jury? Three-quarter ton. I make a motion, we accept it.
All right, Commissioner Shook made a motion to accept the bid of seventy-five thousand dollars. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, we have a ten fifteen public hearing. The only other thing we have is burn bans. Do we want to, do we want to discuss burn bans now? Is there any reason to take the burn ban off?
No, there is no one.
Everyone good with it? Then we'll go no action on the burn ban. And let's take a recess till ten fifteen, and we'll have a public hearing for the lowering of the speed limit on Judge's Road from thirty to twenty-five. We are in recess.
Yeah, that's one of the things that, it happens. Here, go downstairs real quick.
Dodge is right there on the corner where you get to the.
Right behind your right.
Parkview joint, and the Chevrolet, they just built it up there, it's far down the road. Gas, it's gas, the one I'm taking, I have is the gas one, I'm getting it decently. Okay, thank you. And then three-quarter ton, it was, you know, it's working for a while. All, really, it's good, it's down in fine parts, though. Yeah, it's one of those, it's called a utility bed, it's basically a fat bed with a box just all the way down, where you can open up the top. And then it's, they box it up by the cabin. I think they did a metal steeple trailer, but they're selling them as a package deal. They got a cabin chassis truck, they go to the Chevrolet, so they take them over to, take them to a truck trailer. Have you already had a discussion? Really? Thanks for telling me that. I was talking to, I guess it's pretty common, and I was talking to another guy the other day, he had a bed like that. Like, what do you think about that? He goes, oh, it was pretty good for a while, and then all my lights started falling out, you know, little round lights. He said, all those started falling out, and then he's driving along the other day, and he's got, I mean, I have no lights. He said, I got it in there, and he said it was just a big conglomeration of web, fire web stuff, and they had to cut all that out. It's a CMTM bed. It's thirteen thousand foot bed. No. I fixed a truck for Brass's Communication the other day. They got rear ended. They had a utility bed. It's like, well, they don't even have a boost and they fall in. It's just toolboxes. It was seventeen thousand dollars for that bed. It overwet, I mean, it was just really the ride, rear bog is pushed in. And that's, it's pretty easy to get a welder. You don't cut that out. Well, the body's done.
Cheryl's looking for you.
So they don't even talk to you about fixing it. All they'll do is replace it.
Ask her where I sent you. That's coming in.
I'm losing my head.
What? I don't. Why is that working better still? Were we working later in the day? My guys don't need to work holidays. How do you forget to do the work that Jimmy does a lot? Oh, I didn't do that. My guys are there. We have, we have the whole week off. That week, John usually, he'll work all but two days. We just watch for the slow movements. I saw it.
So I have that.
You don't want.
Bar company to, because I had the company in there. So if you see on here, here's, here's. So that's the, that's the flatbed everything, uh, and the man everything. And then he's going to do a training, but. Now you have. Yes. It can pull the, it can pull motor right away or pull this a little bit. Let me get you that long rack quick.
No, she wants to talk to you.
Really? Was it banana or something?
No. No, why you tell me? No, this is some big, with the phone system.
I didn't, I didn't.
It's a bit like, if he would just give us a chance, I said, I'll give you your card. And I didn't win something to him several times. But she said, well, give a free, I would give a free trial.
You know, I've got internet, phone in my other office, so I'm just not going to.
That's what we've got.
We're going to have to go to it at some point, but. Oh, David said it. I don't know. I don't know actually. I'll bet you that his friends will actually. He, he does most of the phone work. But it just, it, sometimes it drops, falls, and sometimes you get like the, it's kind of like on yourself, like you kind of, you've got bad connections, in and out, in and out.
I told her to give you the card, so. She let me win some whiskey rocks that way.
You got some whiskey rocks?
Yeah.
Those are pretty cool.
Yeah.
Are you afraid of them?
Yeah.
What kind of rock is it?
It looks like granite, great granite.
Yeah, have you ever tried it? Does, is there a taste of the rock?
I don't have a try to yet. I don't even have a bottle of whiskey in my house, so I haven't got to try it.
I've seen them. I just didn't know if they were.
Don't rock it in there.
Yeah. I bet you rock. I bet you there's been some idiots that have just.
Guilty.
Guilty.
Don't want to water this down.
Set place it.
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah, I want a big leather bag.
I never spend my cards on those things. So talking about whiskey and stuff, I, I've got a college friend who works in Austin at the insurance firm that my grandfather used to work at. And I saw him at the Texas game the other day and he says, oh, yeah, we've got all these quotes from your grandfather. I'm like, really? Like, you know, he's been retired for forty years or whatever. He goes, yeah, my favorite one is, your grandfather goes to the doctor and the doctor asks him, you know, how many drinks do you have, you know, how many drinks do you have a night? Why are you asking this? He goes, he goes, you have one drink a night? Do you have two drinks a night? And he goes, hell, doc, I spill more than that.
All right. I guess we've got two minutes. I do not think we're going to have any more people coming to this public hearing now.
But you leave the opening. Close it.
I'm ready in case people get up.
Oh, I said, I'm like getting you a little sad.
Yeah. I'm waiting. One day I'm going to get to do that. So I have went up there and I keep waiting for. I'm waiting for an opportunity. I wanted to be with Dan Della Cruz where I'm going to bank it, bank it, bank it, and then I'm going to throw that. So I'm waiting for this, an opportunity. I haven't been able to do it yet.
Let's create a right moment.
The moment will come.
It will.
I figured it was him when he walked in.
I know.
Yeah, maybe that's what you're doing. Is Stacy, when you get pictures and stuff, if you'll get it on the flights, would you sell them?
I do. It's good to hear. I have it on my phone right now. I found it for the pothole patch that I will get.
All right. I'm going to call us back. The order is ten, ten fifteen AM. It is time for our public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. The subject, the subject matter is to take public opinion on the proposal to lower the speed limit of Judge's Road in Young County Precinct Two from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour. Scott, would you like to say?
Yes, and I've been asked to address this from the homeowners on, on Judge's Road. And then after this was posted, they called me, a lot of them did, all of them, but I'd say probably seventy-five percent of the homeowners on the road. And they weren't for, they weren't opposed. They were for trying to get some handle on some of the speeding traffic, which is mostly hunters and, um, oil lease and things like that that are.
But you're saying that the residents on that road, to the best of your knowledge, they're, they're predominantly for lowering the speed limit?
Yes.
Do we have any members from the public that would like to address this?
Yes, I'd just like to ask a question or two, I guess. Is the thirty mile an hour speed limit posted?
It's not posted with the sign, but that is the, it's posted in the records just thirty.
If it's not posted, it's, it's about sixty.
Got it.
Not posted.
Right, yeah, faster than you go.
There's actually a non-posted road. There's actually.
There is a sixty-five mile an hour.
Is that what it is? Is that what it is? Got it.
So is it patrolled?
Uh, I've never seen an officer on that road.
What's it?
A mile long, at least.
A dead end?
Dead end.
Yeah. Would you post the thirty mile an hour speed limit and have it patrolled?
Good. Those twenty-five miles an hour.
If it's not patrolled, maybe one of them will work.
Exactly, yeah, I mean.
And that'll cost money, you know.
Yeah.
For the pro.
Signs were cheap. I would see something we could try first, you know, if it slows somebody down a little bit for a little while, then at least we've tried.
Maybe give somebody the opportunity. If we can get, get patrol. I mean, we have patrols that go by there.
Oh, yeah.
Now whether they go down there and sit for a minute.
I mean, all of it is a simple request. I think if we requested, people would patrol it.
Sure.
I don't think.
Yeah.
But, um.
That was the request of the homeowners that came to me and said, would you put up a sign? And I said, and that's when I went and looked and seen what the votes, if part of my record showed it was thirty, thirty-five mile an hour, whichever it says. And I said, well, we'll try twenty-five and see if, if it helps. Can't hurt anything.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Yeah, why are you going to pick a free boy from this at thirty-five?
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Shook, is there, do you want to take any action after this public hearing? I mean, you made a motion that we, yeah. All right, so Commissioner Shook is making a motion that we lowered the speed limit from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour on Judge's Road. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second from Commissioner Crisp, Commissioner Crispell. Is there any discussion on this matter?
I'll just vote for it since there's nobody here who really opposes and is against it.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. I guess we'll get some signs posted.
Will, yes, sir.
Got it.
If the neighborhood's asking for it, in my opinion, uh, it's kind of like they had Tamara Ridge asking me to lower theirs like that. They had eighty percent of their people sign the petition. And if we can get a patrol, I think all of the people that signed the petition will be getting tickets now.
Well, the good news is we're now fully staffing and so, you know, we can, we can, maybe Scott, if you could ask Sheriff Badcock to have this guy, you know, a couple of times a week, drive it, just check it out. Be a good thing.
Okay.
All right, I'm not showing any other businesses. Is there anyone who'd make a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion.
Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good meeting, guys.
No, they're not giving any emails. So in order to, thirty thousand, let's get these plans made.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a phone call out in Fort Bend.
Got it.
We're going to need to get a pole moved.
Got it.
And then we need to transfer.
Got it.
I talked to the bad guy. Helping these stuff, we talked to other people, talking about getting a. First thing I want to do is make sure we have enough power.
Got it.
I'm going to have a Fort Bend, I need me out there. We're going to move in the pole, adding transformers for power. And then McFadden put in these RV parts for it. He has the offices that will step up, have the fifty AM, thirty AM. I don't have any ideas on a plumber, do the plumbing, but I'm going to talk to Hanson Mallory about how this will be set up.
Got it. They may have an idea.
Thanks, Alan.
Before we build anything, call him, just because he, he's.
Oh, really?
He's just been in some media. He's, he's a nice guy.
I'll, I'll talk to him.
And he's, he's, he's excited about it, so he wants it to be successful.
Okay.
Um, and he's, he's got a lot of comments on some stuff like that. Please just give us something.
But if you have any, I have just.
Well, does it feel good to be right about the pothole patcher?